Good evening, everyone. This is the City Council meeting on January nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Let's start with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Laurenti, Wright, Weifenbach, Doyle, Estes, Lewis, Drew, Roberts, Nordstrom, Scott. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll have the invocation from Pastor Steve Selfridge of First Wesleyan Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Lord Jesus, according to your word, it seems to say that if you are not on our side, then we can possibly be overwhelmed. Your word says that maybe waters will overwhelm us and go over our souls. And I just pray that you would help each individual here that their soul would be found in you, you who we can rest upon, and may we find help in your name. I thank you, Lord, for the individuals who serve our city so well. I think of each of our City Council members. Thank you for Alderwoman Scott and Alderwoman Drew and Alderwoman Doyle, and then Alderminz, Nordstrom, and Roberts, and Lewis, and Estes, and Weifenbach, and Wright. Thank you for our mayor, and I thank you for the many other personnel that are represented behind the scenes. And I just pray that each thing that's discussed here tonight with passion would be surrendered to you. And I ask, Lord, that each person that's going to be sharing as well, thank you for the passion that they have. And I pray that decisions would be made right and decisions would be following under your plan. Thank you for the way that we can have city government. And I ask for your presence to be felt in this room tonight, and I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. Now we'll go on to the adoption of the agenda. And as we handle that, I would suggest at the request of our finance officer that we move item number thirty-two to item forty-nine A. Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. All right, now we're on to awards and recognitions.
In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we're pleased to present the January two thousand and sixteen Veteran of the Month recognition to Lieutenant Colonel George Larson. Colonel Larson graduated from Iowa State University with a degree in history, commissioned as a second lieutenant in the United States Air Force in May of nineteen sixty-nine, and newly retires lieutenant colonel in March of nineteen ninety-two. Colonel Larson served as Strategic Intelligence Officer with the Strategic Air Command and the Joint Strategic Target Planning Staff, Defense Intelligence Agency, Pacific Air Forces, with an assignment with Republic of South Creek Air Force, alternate National Military Command Center, and Joint Chiefs of Staff at the Pentagon. His career broadened with the assignment as commandant of cadets with Air Training Command's Air Force Reserve Officer Training Program. While in the Air Force, Colonel Larson completed Air Force Squadron Officer School, Air Command and Staff College, Air War College, Industrial College of the Armed Forces, Naval War College, Foreign Service Institute Program in the Middle East, Soviet and Eastern Europe, and specialized military courses required for his Air Force duties as an intel officer. Colonel Larson has authored and edited numerous books on military history and has several books on the writing stage. He's published over three hundred magazine articles on military history, aviation, naval, and general history. Colonel Larson is a member of the Rapid City Military Veterans Writing Group, which assists the researching, writing, and publishing on stories of veterans to carry on their military accomplishments in history. In the community, Colonel Larson acts as an auxiliary police member, assisted accidents, parades, special functions. He ran the fire protection program in Chapel Valley, and they earned the Firewise Community Designation in twenty twelve through twenty fifteen. Retired Lieutenant Colonel Larson has been serving our country since nineteen sixty-nine with dedication and sacrifice, making him an excellent Veteran of the Month. His example of service makes him deserving of this honor. I would like to send our gratitude to you, Colonel George Larson, good friend. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here tonight, not only because my fellow veterans have showed up, my family has showed up, but also because of Rapid City. I am a dedicated member of the community of Rapid City. I want to keep on serving Rapid City. To me, it's very important to give back what so much of my community has given to me. I want to keep on doing it, and with friends like this, the former police chief, who I know quite well, and then, of course, Jerry Wright, who I've worked with in our own Chapel Valley area, to make it a safer place. I want to thank you for this honor. It's, to me, it's very humbling.
The honor is ours. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's go stand over here for a picture. Okay, this is the time when we normally have the general public comment. There are no speaker request forms tonight, so we'll go on to the non-public hearing items, items two through forty-eight. There are no speaker requests on these items as well, so we'll take us on to the consent items, items two through forty-three. Are there any of those items that the council wishes to remove from consent? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Move.
Okay, we had Richie Nordstrom second it, and Ron Weifenbach made the motion. Okay, all in favor of approving these consent items, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries. That will take us on to the non-consent items, items forty-four through forty-eight. There are no speaker requests, so we will not have an open public comment on these items. Let's go straight to item number forty-four, Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number forty-four is Resolution Number two thousand and sixteen dash zero zero four to donate property no longer needed for municipal purposes to the Ogla La Lakota Sheriff's Office to the January nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, City Council meeting. I think this was, yeah. This was forwarded without recommendation.
Motion to approve by Darla Drew and a second by Jerry Wright. Okay, seeing no comments, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, say no. Next item.
The Human Relations Commission's semi-annual update, and this was forwarded without recommendations so that the Human Relations Commissioner could address the full council.
Okay.
Gosh, that was fast. I thought I'd have a little time to sit around and... Okay, I'm going to make sure that I don't go over my time. Okay. Well, since the last reporting period, the City Council's office has handled fifteen phone calls on behalf of the Human Relations Commission, and of those fifteen, seven required a meeting with the Assistant Attorney Wade Nyberg in order to gather more information. And out of those, seven required a meeting with him. And after meeting with those seven, it was determined that four of the contacts had potential Sorry, I'm going to back up on that. Out of the seven, four, after checking with their evidence and visiting with them, it did not appear that they experienced treatment that would fit in the criteria for unlawful discrimination under our city ordinance. Two of the individuals out of the seven that he met with decided they didn't want to file a complaint after visiting with him, and one contact resulted in a verified complaint being drafted. It was sent on to the respondent, and the respondent then asked that it be retransferred to the South Dakota Division of Human Rights. In each case, the individuals contacting the Rapid City Human Relations Commission through the city attorney's office were given assistance and were referred to a more appropriate department or agency if the issue they were concerned with did not fit the criteria for complaint of unlawful discrimination. So, the next item was in-service training, and that was something that we promised the City Council that we would do on a regular basis. Jacqueline Gary, who was new to the commission, received her training and orientation for new commissioners, and recently, we just updated commissioners regarding regulations under the Fair Housing Act regarding reasonable accommodations in housing. We also updated them on revised regulations for service animals under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Education and outreach, public service announcement, our PSA Stand Up and Speak Out, which was developed with the assistance of Tim Riley of Midcontinent Communications, has continued to air on local cable channels, KOTI Television, and on the Public Access Channel. The PSA, if you've seen it, I'm sure you've probably seen it once or twice, encourages bystander action against prejudice and discrimination. Midcontinent has been really working with this on that. They will send it out over the cable channels at our request at certain intervals, and we recently had them send it out during the LNI conference. As I reported last time, many members of the Native American community are still indicating that they're not completely aware of the services we provide, and so we have placed notices periodically in the Native Sun News that describe the kind of complaints that we handle and how to contact us. And the most recent notices were placed during the LNI conference as well. The commission has a PowerPoint presentation available to share with the public that explains the work that we do and the kinds of cases that we handle. Groups and organizations can contact us through the city attorney's office, and we'll schedule a presentation. It's not a long presentation, it's about fifteen minutes, and then we would be open for any questions from the public. The commission is also developing content to place on the HRC page of the city website. The goal is to make our site informative and user-friendly. In order to be informed regarding local initiatives and current civil rights issues, commission members have continued to attend numerous public meetings regarding racial issues that are currently being addressed in Rapid City. The commission has also invited representatives of groups to attend our meetings in order to update us on the work that they're doing. Steve Emery, the Secretary of the South Dakota Department of Tribal Affairs, and David Reese, Director of Intergovernmental Affairs, requested a meeting with the Rapid City Human Relations Commission while they were in Rapid City in July. And Secretary Emery and Mr. Reese met with three of the commissioners, and we gave them information about the scope of our jurisdiction and the work that we've been doing since two thousand and nine. And we also met with Chief Carl Jegeris and Von Vargas, who's the cultural advisory, advisor coordinator. And we did this in October, and he updated us, they both updated us, on the initiatives that they're pursuing to improve racial relations and communications between the Police Department and the Native American community. They also told us about the MacArthur Foundation grant, and they also asked us to provide a letter of support, which we did. The commission members attended the conversation about race and policing in Rapid City, and they were all provided with the link to the report for study. So, that's what we've done over the past six months. The commission members said that they want you to know that they are very committed to being involved in outreach in the community and working with initiatives to support them for cultural understanding and racial harmony. And also, they wanted you to know, from the city attorney's office, that no one who comes in for information ever leaves without a referral.
Thank you very much for the update. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go to Darla Drew now.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick question for Ms. Timmons. How many versions of the PSA did you guys create then? I know there was more than one.
Two versions were created. A third one was filmed, but there was a computer crash, and the last version was lost. Tim Riley, though, has told us that he will work with us to develop something new, something to follow on to the Stand Up, Speak Out campaign.
Okay, I think that's important work, and I think that I should be in the next one. Anyway, that's just a joke, okay?
Want to let him know.
A little too serious sometimes. I think that this group has done exemplary work, and it really helps to have this outreach going on so people know that there is a lifeline. If you feel like you're being discriminated against, or if you're with an organization that feels like you might have some concerns about having someone bring a complaint against you, whether valid or not, it would be great to get ahold of the Human Relations Commission for a short presentation on how to go through their process. I think it'd really help a lot of the organizations in this community, and I've invited them to be part of the disabilities, Mayor's Committee with Disabilities meeting in March. So, thank you for developing all those resources.
Thank you. Commission members have, each are working on subcommittees of the community conversation. Mr. Nyberg and I have attended meetings where people were curious about what we did and how we operate, and so we are, we're trying to get out into the community. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
We'll go to Amanda Scott now.
Thank you, Mayor. Sue, just wanted to thank you for the report. I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge.
Okay, we have motion and a second to acknowledge. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, item number forty-six, under Community Planning. Sherry Doyle, sorry.
Item number forty-six is a request by Dream Design International, Inc., for preliminary subdivision plan for Prop. 2 and 4 of Shopco Edition located at eighteen forty-five Haynes Avenue. Make a recommendation to approve, or make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Motion and a second. Seeing no comment, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Okay, next item.
Item number forty-seven is a request by Spurlet Consulting, Inc., for Freeland Meadows LLC for preliminary subdivision plan for a bunch of blocks in Prairie Meadows subdivision, generally described as being located northeast of the West Nike Road and Country Road intersection.
Move to approve.
With stipulations, please.
Is that okay with the motion maker?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Darla Drew and a second by John Roberts. And now we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mayor. I need to abstain from this. I have an ownership interest in Freeland Meadows.
Duly noted. Okay, all in favor of item forty-seven, say aye. Those opposed, okay, motion passes with Brad Estes abstaining. Now on to the mayor's items, items forty-eight. We'll have an update on the Central States Fair from the Supreme Allied Commander of the Central States Fair, Ron Jeffries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate your time, allowing me to just update you and the community a little bit about the upcoming stock show. I might first start with, we just finished our audit. Kittle Forsterson provides us with an audit annually, and I'm pleased to announce that it was an unqualified audit. Not being of the accounting background, I want to tell you that that's a good thing. It means that they've given their opinion without reservation. Bottom line profit from our efforts this year is about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And of that, the board has directed a hundred thousand dollars back into improvements in facilities and grounds operations, so maintenance of the facility and equipment. So, we're very excited about being able to continue to improve the fairgrounds' properties and make them available to the public. One other note with that, in the course of last year, we also, as a nonprofit, donated about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in goods and services to other groups and nonprofits within the community by use of everything from donating fare tickets to events to use of facilities. And so, we really stress in our office as a board and as a staff how important it is to be good neighbors and good members of this community. So, I'm very proud of that, that we're able to provide that to the community as well. I will also mention one other thing, that we are also received our ADA review, our ADA audit, and we are in the process of making the upgrades at the fairgrounds as well. A portion of those monies, I'm sure, will be used to make some of those upgrades. So, we will be in full compliance. I think we have two years to complete. We've met with Gene Fennell, who's been charged for the county, with making sure that compliance is met at all county facilities. Black Hills Stock Show and Rodeo. So, official dates are Friday, January twenty-ninth through February seventh. But one of the things I wanted to mention is that we actually start a full week ahead of that, starting on Saturday, February twenty-third, with the events out at the Stock Show. We have one of the largest quarter horse shows in the region that takes place during that time, so we'll have that economic impact starting an entire week ahead of what we traditionally know as the Black Hills Stock Show and Rodeo dates. All events that take place at the fairgrounds in that first week, all the quarter horse shows and events are all free to the public, so I just want to mention that, that there is quite a bit going on as we lead up to the Stock Show. Our Stock Show starts Saturday. Official dates, the twenty-ninth, Friday, the twenty-ninth. We will start at ten AM with a ribbon cutting. We'd like to extend an invitation for everybody to come and join us at the Sail Ring for the kickoff, and I think we have a proclamation as well. Thank you very much. And we will use that as the springboard. It's when everything opens up and we start, so we'll have a presentation there. Would love to have you attend. I'll tell you, excitement is out there for the Stock Show. First time ever, we had five breeds of cattle sales that closed out, maxed out. We had to stop accepting entries, maxed out on Angus, Charley, Red Angus, Sematol, and our Embryo sale that takes place. So, it's very exciting. It's the most, the highest number of entries we've ever had at the Stock Show. It's also the highest number of entries we've ever had for the South Dakota Quarter Horse Association Horse Sale. I think we had to turn back approximately a hundred additional horses that we could not accept into the horse sale, which just shows that that demand and the growth of the show continues to move forward in a very positive manner. We also had over a hundred vendors that we were unable to accept because we didn't have the space to allow them to come in. And the last note for those sales and activities was the Buffalo Sale. The Black Hills Buffalo Classic takes place on Super Bowl Sunday down at the New Bridger Steel Building, and it's a very cool deal. It is the sale that sets the standard for the buffalo market in the nation, takes place right at the Black Hills Stock Show. So, a huge sale, they continue to grow, and we're very excited to host them. Couple of new items, or one new event I wanted to bring to your attention. Tuesday's our ranch rodeo, and it's always a big, fun event. We bring lots of good ranchers into town to participate, and we thought, as long as we had all those really good cowboys in town, we wanted to treat them Wednesday morning at eight o'clock to Bronx for breakfast. Farm Credit Services America is going to provide biscuits and gravy and sausage breakfast for everybody that attends. It's a ticketed event, but for everybody that attends, your breakfast is included. And then at eight o'clock, and then at ten o'clock, we're going to have, I think there's twenty-nine entries that will ride Bronx, two- and three-year-old Bronx, and there'll be Ranchy, and Woolly, and Woofy, and Snaky, and they're riding them in a stock saddle, which means saddle horn, and thick stirrups, and all the things that could cause you havoc when you're out riding a horse. But that'll be a new event for it. We're excited about it. We know that that crowd will come in Tuesday night and then stay over for that Wednesday to come participate in that event the next morning. Second year into our South Dakota Bid Calling Contest competition, on Sunday, the very first Sunday, the thirty-first, at two o'clock, the South Dakota Auctioneers Association will crown their state champion auctioneer. And they do that as part of the Stock Show, with the benefit from those auction proceeds going to the Central States Fair Foundation, which in turns puts money towards repairs of the fairgrounds' properties. Second year for the Boots and Beer Festival. That was a huge success last year. It'll be the last Saturday of the Stock Show. It starts at seven o'clock with dueling pianos, and I think we've got eight local breweries and one from Sheridan that are going to come over and provide beer samples for everybody to come out and try, and then we'll have music after that as well. National Sheep Shearing Championship doesn't get enough attention, but the champion of the United States Sheep Shears will be crowned at the Black Hills Stock Show. They will earn the right every other year to go to the World Show and wherever it's destined to be held. Lauren Obstol, from right here at Piedmont, is our current reigning national champion, and they'll be back competing again, and that's on Thursday, February fourth, along with the sheepdog trials. It's about our third year for the Leather Show. The one thing I wanted to mention about the Leather Show this year, George Beal is an old cowboy and attorney here in town. He's got a saddle collection of about three hundred saddles. He's bringing a number of those, not anywhere near three hundred, but he's going to bring a number of those saddles down here to help explain a little bit about the history and the different styles of saddles. So, it's a very cool addition to our Leather Show this year. We're excited to have George participate with us. And then, of course, our banquet and ball takes place the very first Saturday evening, and we've got some great honorees that we're going to be recognizing. The Baker Ranch from down by Hermosa, Grady Crew from the Crew Agency over by Wall, and Kevin Schmidt, who's been a volunteer of ours and served on the Ranch Rodeo Committee for, I think this is his twentieth year of working on the ranch rodeo, so we're excited to have that. Central States Fair couldn't do it without our volunteers. Many of you have served on our Board of Directors or as volunteers to the fair. We appreciate your service. And with that, I'll have a full schedule of events for you, along with an invitation in your, coming to you by email through Lindsay, so that you can let us know if there's events that you'd like to attend. And the full schedule's online at blackhillstockshow.com. With that, I would ask if anybody has any questions or comments.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate the update. We look forward to working with you and all of your group this year. It sounds like it's going to be a lot of fun.
It will be fun, we promise. Thank you.
We'll go to Ron Weifenbach here. He might have something for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to acknowledge, and I'd like to keep forward. Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Your update was quite impressive, and I know that you couldn't do it without your hundreds and hundreds of volunteers and everybody that puts the time and energy into making this thing happen. And from the bottom of our hearts, we appreciate all their efforts. Without them, it wouldn't happen. It's a big economic spike for the city of Rapid City. There's probably, I mean, there's going to be trailers everywhere. It sounds like you've got every farmer and rancher from here in the five-state area that's going to come and show up, and we definitely will keep their money for them. And on a second note, and I was earlier talking to the mayor, he said something about wanting to learn how to shear some sheep, so if there's a way we can work that out, we'd appreciate it.
We certainly can.
Thank you.
He's just a few miles from the national sheep shearing capital of North America.
That's right.
Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Well, Ron, I'm a fan as well of all your work that you've done there, but I do have a couple of questions. You turned down several hundred cattle and horses that were approaching your group that wanted to be at the show?
Yes, we did. There probably wasn't a hundred in the cattle market. In the horse market, there was over a hundred.
And then also vendors. You turned down a hundred vendors. So, how much money are you leaving on the table by not having?
by not having the room that you need at the civic center?
You know, it's a very good question, and there's opportunity for growth. The biggest thing that space would do for us would allow us more programming, and really, bringing people to town to do different events. That's why when I mentioned things like sheep shearing, leather shows, quilt shows, those things that are not the mainstream cattle shows of the show, it really helps, it helps a rancher whose most decisions in a ranch family is made by the dad that we're going to this for a livestock business decision. But it includes the family with all kinds of other events, World's Smallest Rodeo to mutton busting. And so, that's what more space would allow us to do, do more programming. It would give more people reasons to come. Certainly, thank you.
So, you don't know how much money you lost by not having space, and I won't put you on the skillet like that, but you know, it just is, it makes me sad that we can't really accommodate your wonderful event in the way that it should be in this town, because you've worked really hard to make it grow, and now we have to have a facility for it. So, thank you, Ron.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ron. And we have a motion and a second to acknowledge the update.